Okay, there we go.
Testing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Tracy Hanson. I'm the Fire Chief with the Kasumnas Fire Department. We approached your city manager, Jason Berman, and perhaps coming to the council on a quarterly or more often as needed basis to provide you with information from the fire department, share with the council what the fire department is up to, and with the citizens of Galt. And this evening, as a part of that project, we're going to present to you our 2011 Annual Response Efficiency Report. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief McElhany, my deputy chief, who will provide you with that information. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Madam Mayor, members of the council, John McElhany, Deputy Fire Chief for the Kasumnas Fire Department. Excuse me, I'm fighting a little bit of a cold. Tonight, we're here to present to you a summary of our 2011 calendar year Annual Response Efficiency Report. We developed this data during the calendar year, and because of the processing time to get the last quarter's data, we usually aren't able to get last year's report out until about April or May. So while the date seems a little past, the timeliness of this report is typical for us. As you know, the Kasumnas Fire Department is an all-risk career agency, providing fire and EMS services to the cities of Elk Grove, Galt, and the surrounding county areas, including ambulance service to the communities of Wilton, Harold, Walnut Grove, and Cortland. This report summarizes our response activities for all those areas, and I'll try to highlight where I can the specifics for the city of Galt. For the first time in our staff's memory, we were able to present a report to our Board of Directors and to you, the City Council, that meets and in the city of Galt actually exceeds the response time criteria set by the Kasumnas Community Service District Board of Directors. It's very challenging to meet those goals, given the spread, the distance between stations in the Elk Grove area, the geography we have with separation between Elk Grove and Galt, and the amount of traffic that we deal with on a day-to-day basis. So we're very pleased to initiate this by saying that we have met our response time goals of responding to emergencies in the urban area within six minutes 90% of the time. The chart you have before you today shows our, or right now, shows you our annual call volume for the calendar year 2011 was 14,161 calls. This represents responses to emergency medical services, fires of all types, vehicle accidents, public assists, all of our emergency responses. It doesn't take into account any of our routine public service that we provide through fire prevention activities, fire station visits, school visits, et cetera. These are only emergency responses. Year over year, it's a 3.37% increase in call volumes, coming from 36.92 calls a day in 2010 to what you see here representing 38.21 calls per day. During the year 2010, we responded to 1,816 emergency responses in the city of Galt, 9,341 calls in the city of Elk Grove, and 3,000 calls in the county areas or mutual or automatic aid to our surrounding departments. The next slide depicts the time it takes for our firefighters to respond out of the station upon receipt of a call. The National Fire Protection Association Standard 1710 says that the recommended out-of-door time should be one minute or less from time receipt of call. So you can imagine firefighters lead a lifestyle like a lot of us. You sleep, you eat, go to the restroom. There's different activities during the day around the station. No matter what the activity is, the goal is to be out of the door within one minute receipt of alarm. Our average out-of-door time for 2011 is 57 seconds. Now, we were only able to reach that one-minute mark 60% of the time. This is a pretty challenging number for us, because if you consider the amount of gear that firefighters have to put on prior to initiating a response, say, to a structured fire, it takes almost a minute just to get that gear on. So it's a tough benchmark to make. We're happy where we're at. We're always searching for ways to improve. At Station 45 here in Galt, which has the slowest average out-of-door time, we're exploring things like different motors for the doors, because the doors go up slowly, just because of the style of motor they have. So we're always looking for ways to improve this number, and just because we've met our benchmark, we still want some more improvement. Interestingly enough, by the way, and I'm sure I'll mention this again later in the report, even though Station 45 up there has a slightly longer out-of-door time than other stations in the district, they do have the overall fastest response time to emergencies at the department. Each of the stations range with an average between 53 seconds and a minute and four, so we're very close to that benchmark right now. Now, this is probably the first time that we've shown any of these charts here, so as we go through them a little bit, I'll explain some background on how they're put together. This is the incident distribution chart that illustrates where calls occur in the Kasumnas Community Service District. It represents only those areas within the geographic boundary of the Community Service District and is not representative of calls occurring in Harold, Wilton, Cortland, Walnut Grove, City of Sacramento, or Sacramento Fire District where we provide auto aid or mutual aid. Each of the dots would represent a call, but if there are two or more calls at the same location, they're stacked on top of each other. So if you wanted to take the painstaking effort to count these dots, and we can take a break if you want to work on that for just a minute, you will not find 14,161 individual dots on the map. So places that have high-density apartment complexes, senior apartment complexes, convalescent hospitals, large shopping centers, you'll see a cluster of those dots, and then on top of those, there's stacks of dots. One of the places on this map, for example, west of Galt, northwest of here, is the RCCC Correctional Facility. And that's represented on this map as one dot, but I can, without going and doing the records research, say that we were probably there 70 times during the year for responses. So it would show up as just one dot on this map 70 deep. And since it's not three-dimensional, we don't get that perspective. Each of the red squares on the map illustrates an open fire station. We operate six fire stations in Elk Grove and two here in the city of Galt. Okay? I'm going to show you a series of maps that talk about performance, and they're color-coded to illustrate the percentage effectiveness of arriving at the scene of an emergency within six minutes, and this is measuring those responses only within the urban area. So that's why on these maps, as you see above me and on your display, the city limit boundaries of Elk Grove, the city limit boundaries of Galt are depicted as urban area responses, and that the response times for the rural areas are longer and are not covered in this report tonight. When you look at the map, each little box is a response area, and it represents the timeframe in which it took for us to respond to those calls. If the box is white, no calls occurred in that area, and most of the time, those are undeveloped areas within the city limits. If the box is dark green, that means that we were there in 90%, you know, met our 90% goal. And I'm going to use my chart here, because it's been a while. If we move to a light green, we're there, this is like A, B, C, D kind of grading, 80 to 90%. If it's yellow, we meet our response time, 70 to 80%. And then the one we like not to see is red, which is 0 to 50% of the time we're able to achieve a response in that area within six minutes. Now, something that's important for us to recognize when we look at this kind of a map and this type of data. So if we look on the map for the Galt area, out by Station 46, there's a little red zone there. Interestingly enough, I think that's where the fire station is. And that makes a lot of sense to firefighters, but not to people who have a fire station. Living close to a fire station is good if they're there and bad if they're not, because you're as far away from the next fire station as possible. So that little square there says that we missed the mark in getting to calls in that square, and we're only able to achieve 49% or less of the time at six minutes. But it doesn't tell us how many calls happened in that square. If there was one call that we got to in two minutes and one call that we got to in eight minutes, it would show red. So there are areas where 150 calls have occurred in one of these boxes, and areas where only one call has occurred in that box. So you have to take it as sort of a summary when you look at these, and when you search out that one area, we'd have to do some detailed study on why that color is the color it is on the map based upon how many runs and what happened on those particular runs. On the quick overview, this is total responses. You can see that the colors covering the city of Galt, very green. Go. Good. And we have some data, relevant data there that it's pretty spectacular for this community. Station 46's overall average response time is three minutes and 48 seconds, meeting our six-minute average 92% of the time. Station 45, three minutes and 50 seconds, meeting our six-minute average 94% of the time. Those are pretty tremendous numbers. That's very spectacular response times. We're pleased to see those.
Would you remind me, Station 45 is which one?
I'm sorry, Station 45 is downtown, and Station 46 is on the east side. Station 45 is staffed with a fire engine with three personnel and a paramedic ambulance with firefighters staffing that with two personnel. We have the same configuration as Station 46, a fire engine with three personnel and a paramedic firefighter ambulance with two personnel. You can compare and contrast that with our station. It's our least performing station, which is out along the I-5 corridor in Elk Grove between Laguna and Elk Grove Boulevard, whose average overall response time is six minutes 34 seconds and only meets the six-minute average 81% of the time. So you see a significant difference in response times between those two areas, and our issue up there is placement of the station. It wasn't well-planned. When we had to build that station, there was very few options for land available, and where it's situated affects our ability to respond to calls in that area. Now, in a total overall performance, many years ago, one of these reports, the chief at the time made the proclamation that we had the fastest response times in the county, had best overall response times as an agency in the county, and we really felt at the time that as Elk Grove was growing, because it was just Elk Grove Fire at the time, that we weren't going to be able to say that going into the future as traffic impacts really started to take a toll on response times. Based upon a review of the data countywide for this report, we're pleased to say that we still maintain, Kasumnas Community Services still maintains, the fastest response times in the county for fire and EMS services.
Can I ask you a question before you go on?
Yeah.
Come on. One of the concerns that a lot of citizens have in Galt is if you're on the west side and the railroad tracks get blocked for some unbelievable reason, where you can't get there, what station would they come from Elk Grove, and what do you think the response time would be?
Well, there's a lot of assumptions. Let's assume for a moment that the train is across the downtown corridor here, and Station 46 is covered. Station 46 could respond and come through the north area and south, and there'd be a minimal disruption in the response time. If Station 46 is not covered, it is a long response from Elk Grove, but you'd be served by an engine coming out of the Woodbridge area just south of Galt. We have an automatic aid agreement with them to backfill, to assist us in responses down here because of the geographic separation between the two communities. So they too would be able to come through the south area and then make access in there as well. The rail is a compromised response through the whole county, particularly here in Galt and in Elk Grove. We've contended with it for years, and it will always be an issue until there's a sufficient number of over and underpasses built to offset that. I will say, one thing the economy has affected here in the city of Galt is reduction in staffing at Station 45 in downtown. It was staffed with four personnel originally, and it's no longer staffed with four. So the question does come up, what about putting a station on the other side of the railroad tracks? And that would be a wonderful notion. The funding is not there to do it today. The companies that are here in this community are running half the volume of calls as the companies in Elk Grove, so, and you look at the response times, they're really good. It'd be a hard argument to move those funds to put that station over there at this point, and we are still making our response times even with the railroad in its place.
Thank you.
Okay, the next picture, this map depicts just responses to reported structure fires in the urban area. So you can see, there's a lot of areas that are in, without color, that are white. Those are areas where there was no reported structure fire response in that area in 2011. As you notice, like in Elk Grove, for example, there's a lot of areas that are pretty concentrated with structure fire responses. Again, our average response time here, four minutes and 50 seconds. That's also with having to put on all their gear. All of our stations total are only at 81% for this, and that is because it does take a little bit longer to get geared up. Station 46, 100% of the time was able to achieve a six-minute or less response time to their calls, or those calls occurring in their area, 100% of the time. See if there's any of the notes I have on this. Station 46 was the only station to exceed 90% in this particular category. And once again, our Station 75 brings up our slowest response time hours because of that station placement. One other thing I should point out, though, as we talk about response times, the Los Angeles Fire Department has recently received a lot of bad press about how they depicted response times. If I say that the average response time is four minutes and 50 seconds, if I collapsed on the floor right now and you picked up the phone and dialed 911, you should expect an average response time, let's say, of that four minutes, 50 seconds, doesn't mean that the paramedics and the firefighter paramedics that we employ are going to be standing by my side in four minutes, 50 seconds. They will be out front, pushing a button on their mobile data computer that tells the computer system that they've arrived at the scene. So there is a reflex time that's not captured here, that varies widely depending upon the type of building or facility you're in. If you were in a large school facility, for example, it takes five or six minutes to move from outside to the patient, there would be an extended amount of time. On a structured fire, we're not putting water on the fire in four minutes and 50 seconds. There is, again, a reflex time once we get there to pull hoses, make entry into a building, and then begin fighting the fire. So to be clear, that's not the amount of time it's going to take necessarily to run your aid. If you were laying on the sidewalk out front, it'd be pretty close, but not if you're in your home or in a building, there's a little bit added time.
Chief, there's a question on the response time. Is that four minutes and 50 seconds, does that include the one-minute time that it takes to leave?
Yes.
Does it also include the time for dispatch? In other words, dispatch picks up the call, takes them 30 seconds to...
It's the time, no, this response time is the time that we control, so it's the time of receipt as it tones out at the station until we arrive.
Soon as it's dispatched to you and you get it, that's the time.
Correct.
There may be another 30 seconds for the time somebody picks up the phone call so the dispatcher gets it.
And the goal of our comm center is from the time you hear the quick connection, that that call should be dispatched within 30 seconds, part of a rapid dispatch process. Okay. This next map shows response to advanced life support responses of medical aids of all types. You can see the colors turn green. That's not because necessarily we're faster at these, but it's because there's more numbers to look at most of the time. We have a lot of green in the Galt area, a lot of green up in the Elk Grove area, and our average response time is four minutes and 11 seconds to these types of calls. All stations meeting the 90%, Station 45 and 46 leading the way at 96 and 95% respectively. I could talk over that. Then our last slide for this presentation breaks out vehicle accidents and vehicle fire response performance. Our average response time here, four minutes and 41 seconds, still is good. Station 46 drops to 68%. I don't have a really good answer for that without really looking into their data, but one of the things we find in vehicle accidents is misreporting of locations, especially along the freeway corridors, where somebody will say, for example, if a reporting party makes a mistake of saying the vehicle accident is northbound 99 north of Twin Cities, and our apparatus enters the freeway at Twin Cities and the crash is 200 yards behind them, that's a long turnaround to come back all the way down, come back around, and get there. And so very frequently, that type of issue skews our response numbers on this particular category. Nonetheless, we're still maintaining an average response time of four minutes and 41 seconds. And even though Station 46 is only, in this category, was able to achieve a six-minute response 68% of the time, their overall average response time was still only five minutes and 29 seconds. So it's interesting how those numbers play out, whichever way you look at them. That's a summary of our Response Efficiency Report, and I'm willing to handle any questions or defer them to the Fire Chief, as we may have.
Thank you for that report. Council members, are there any questions or comments? Councilman Sheldon?
I was going to ask the chief something, but I'm not going to now. I'm just kidding.
Hey, just because you're a fire marshal. Councilman Cruz?
Good report.
Vice Mayor?
No, it was a very nice report, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Singleton? I'm sorry. She's not my night.
I do have a couple of questions. Chief McElhany, the numbers you indicated, 14,161 callouts, do those include volunteer departments in our area?
Those are responses by our agency. Would include responses to other departments. So for example, if Medic 40, if one of the ambulances stationed here in Galt or an engine here in Galt responded to help Harold, that would be included in this number.
Okay, but if it was not vice versa, then it wouldn't be the volunteer department to help him out, safety's reason?
No, we'd still get a number for that, but there's, I couldn't say never a time that we're not on that call.
Yeah, that wouldn't be good.
It's very rare.
Never say never.
No.
On the red dots on the map you showed us, which was the 0 to 50% time response time, can you give me an example of why, why would there be a six-minute or better, or a delay in that response time? Is there some geographic reason or why there would be such a slow response time?
Well, I wouldn't call it slow.
Well, according to your numbers and what you gave me is what I'm asking.
The tough part about these, this type of mapping, which is a system that the whole area uses called Cat Atom Analyst, is it doesn't provide an explanation. It's not as advanced as being able to go scroll over that spot and have it pull up all the calls in that area. So for example, if we're going to use this as a, this building as a box, if one time this year you called, said, "I think this building's on fire," and it took us six minutes and one second to get here, it would be a red square. If we came here twice and it took one minute to get here one time and six minutes and one second to get here the second time, then it would still be a red square.
Yeah, you already said, yeah.
So generally speaking, it's because there's few events, and on the few, one of those few events, there was a longer response time than we desired. And that could be anything from back-to-back calls. So if Station 45 responds on a call, and right away Station 46 gets activated for a call in this, the same area, it's likely that there's going to be a delay beyond six minutes.
That's what I was looking for, is was there something in the city that, you know, something that engines had trouble with getting through neighborhoods or something like that? That's all.
We haven't had any, any issues with, like, traffic calming is a big issue for departments, and we're putting a lot of speed bumps in or roadway configurations, but things are pretty well set here for those.
Okay. When you mentioned structure fire, you consider a structure fire any time that you are called for a building of any sort on fire?
Any time there's reported a fire in a building.
Anytime.
Falls into a structure fire.
Whether it's put out when you get there or not?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I would ask if you have anything that you would like to share with our citizens. I think we're getting maybe into the swimming pool time of the year, and I think that's one of the leading causes of death among children. So I would just at this time say, do you have any message that you would like to relay to the citizens?
Actually, I just did some media interviews just yesterday relative to a number of recent drownings in the Sacramento region that have occurred. And for the three days, yesterday, the day before that, and the day before that, three days in a row, we had drownings or near drownings for children under the age of three, one each day. And that was a great concern to us, that we were seeing that kind of activity this early in the season. Of course, drownings can occur any time of year. A child can drown in as little as one inch of water. That includes bathtubs, pools, buckets, five-gallon buckets, toilets. We see drownings in all of those kinds of appliances. So we ask that people watch their children very, very closely, and of course, drownings occur with adults as well, diving into water that you can't see or you're underestimating the depths. It can happen to anybody, so we do ask that people pay attention to that, supervise your children very closely. They are quick, and they can get out of your sight very, very quickly. And the scenarios that have occurred over the last several days, they're happening to good people who simply had an opportunity to have their children get away from them for a limited period of time. They're just tragic accidents. So we do encourage that folks, the laws in the state of California relative to the building code do incorporate some security measures around residential pools. There are course codes relative to public pools, and those things are closely monitored. But again, those can be fixed so they don't work, alarm system disconnected, the batteries pulled out, gates locked open, those kinds of things. And so we encourage folks to keep those systems working and keep a very, very close eye on your children. It just takes a few seconds for a tragic event to occur. And so yes, that's definitely something we're focused on, especially in those last few days, given the number of drownings we have. We're a very water-based region, lots of lakes and rivers and streams, lots of pools. We enjoy a very nice, warm summer, and people enjoy recreating in their pools, so we just ask that people are very cautious.
What about the dry season? Are we getting into that season where we have to worry about wildfires and...
You know, it's funny, every year, as I'm sure many of our fire folks around here know, it's always called, "It's going to be the worst fire season ever." But, you know, we've had very, so, last couple of years relative to the state's fire season. The Southern California region remains impacted by drought. It's been dry there year-round. They really have a year-round fire season, and we saw that when we had a fairly large wildfire in, as late as late November last year. So absolutely right, it's drying up. Those fires will become more and more prevalent as we move through the warmer season. Of course, the Fourth of July periods have always, always are of concern when you're dealing with fireworks, and we ask people to, you know, be very cautious about using safe and sane fireworks only and using them in the proper way. And so yes, we are expecting a particularly busy fire season. That's the prediction, both from the weather predictions going into this fire season, the vegetation is very heavy from a winter rains and moisture, and we're also concerned that there have been incredible budget cuts from a lot of the Forest Agency providers, CAL Fire and the United States Forest Service, and we're concerned relative to their staffing needs as well and how that might impact requests for mutual aid from local agencies as well. So we're watching that very closely.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
If I could add two more things to that. On the first issue, the area fire departments do have a life jacket loan-out program, and you can go to our website at www.yourcSD.com, and we have a listing of fire stations that life jackets are available for loan. Those come in child and adult size. So if you have a pool and you have people coming over to visit for a weekend, for example, you can come borrow life jackets to make sure that they have them in case that if they don't know how to swim, or you don't know whether or not they know how to swim. If you're going out to a lake or river, they're there for that use as well. You come in, you check one out, and return it when you're done, and we're happy to say that we believe that that program, which has been in place around the county for over 10 years, I believe now, has had to have saved lives because it gets used regularly and routinely by folks as they travel through the area.
What was that website again? Sorry, Deputy Chief.
The community service website, it's www.yourcSD.com. The community service website, it's www.yourcsd.com.
Okay, thank you.
And also, just one other little caveat on the summer weather, is if you are going to do any weed mowing or property clearing, that you should do that before ten AM in the morning, so that you do not subsequently start a fire by accident by flipping a rock, and it happens far more frequently than people believe. Just last week, we had a fire started by a fire captain from another agency in the Bay Area, who was doing some weed clearing. So, we have to reiterate that over and over and over again, that the flashy fuels, we call them, the grass dries very quickly in the day, and just a spark will ignite that, and it'll get out of your control very quickly, and can have catastrophic results. So, ten AM.
Ten AM, gotcha.
Yes.
Would the council and the audience join me in applauding the men and women that work to keep our lives safe?
Very much.
Thank you for being here. Okay, I think we're ready for public comments.
Okay, under Government Code, Section 5495, 4.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council, and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the tables inside the entrances to the council chambers, and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk. As a courtesy to others, please silence all your cell phones.
Thank you.
And I have no speaker sheet.
Okay, then, I think we're ready to read the consent calendar now.
We have nine items tonight. The first item, approval of the minutes of the special and regular meeting of May first, two thousand twelve, approval of the special meeting of May fifteenth, two thousand twelve, and approval of the amended minutes for the regular meeting of May fifteenth, two thousand twelve. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contract amendment number one to the agreement with Sacramento County for South County Transit Link sharing of responsibilities and costs with the City of Galt. Number four, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute necessary purchase agreements to replace the damaged city bus. Number five, award of contract for, for fuel delivery. Number six, approved purchase of a VACCON combination sewer cleaning unit. Number seven, approval of proclamations for rail safety. Number eight, approval of a proclamation recognizing June eleventh through June twenty-six as the United States Army Week. And number nine, approval of the Galt Area Historical Society equipment request.
Is there any other discussion on the consent calendar before we vote on it?
We'll take that.
We have a motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Next item, please.
Okay, under regular calendar, the treasurer's report, treasurer's report for the period ending April two thousand twelve. And it's not that our treasurer did not show up tonight, this item was supposed to be on the consent calendar, so I take responsibility for that. But, on his behalf, I would like to ask for approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending two thousand twelve, April two thousand twelve.
I'll do the accept.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a couple of seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, the next item, use of discretionary funds of the city council.
Who placed that on there?
We have one from Vice Mayor Powers, one from Councilmember Singleton.
Okay, I'll go first. I'd like four hundred and seventy dollars and some odd cents approved for posters for the Independence Day celebration. And the remaining money, because we're getting close to the end of the year, and I just love to spend everything I have, I'd like, I know I'm kidding, I'd like to use for the volunteer luncheon. Okay.
And we have two separate motions, Councilmember.
So, is there a motion on that item?
A motion to accept. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Thank you, a motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, next one.
I believe the discretionary funds we're speaking of, what's left of mine, was also to help out with that luncheon, I believe. Is that correct?
I think that's what you wanted to say.
I think that's what I was gonna do, was gonna help, help out with that luncheon.
Yeah, and that's good.
That would be good.
Yeah.
I hope somebody makes a motion and gets something.
I'm sure.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously, and thank you for donating your funds generously, to a good cause.
Yeah, thank you.
We think our volunteers are very important.
Very much.
All right, next item.
Under City Attorney's Office, resolution declaring that the acquisition of portions of certain real property by eminent domain located in the county of Sacramento, and more particularly described as APN number one-four-eight dash zero-zero-seven-four dash zero-two-seven, APN number one-four-eight dash zero-two-four-zero dash zero-zero-one, and APN one-four-eight dash zero-two-five-zero dash zero-five-four and zero-five-six, is necessary for the State Route ninety-nine, Twin Cities Road Interchange Improvement Project.
Go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and council members. I was going to start this presentation, and then additional information was gonna be added by Gwen Owens, the Deputy Public Works Director. And we also have with us tonight Kimberly Hood, who is our special counsel on this item as well. As the, as council is aware, the city is in the process of working with the Department of Transportation to modify the Twin Cities interchange to provide sufficient capacity to accommodate projected increases in traffic along that corridor. The project would include the provision of roundabouts at each of the frontage road intersections, as well as providing additional improvements along the interchange. This project requires acquisition of property from adjacent property owners. The city has been working, over the course of the last six to nine months, in efforts to acquire property needed. We are in, at the stage right now where we have reached agreements with most of the property owners, however, we have three properties where we have yet to, to acquire the necessary right of will. So the purpose of the hearing this evening is to provide an opportunity for those property owners, if they desire, to address the city council, and then for the city council to consider adopting a resolution of necessity to acquire those, the needed property by eminent domain. The adoption of the resolutions before you this evening would authorize the filing of litigation. The filing of litigation and the adoption of the resolution tonight does not mean that we will stop our efforts to acquire the property by way of negotiation. Hopefully, those property owners will continue to engage us in discussions, and we'll, we'll be able to acquire the, the property by way of negotiation before the litigation gets too far. The property owners that are, that are affected, we're provided with written notice of tonight's hearing, and I just wanna pause for a moment and give the, the city clerk an opportunity to confirm the mailing of the notices of the hearing. Yes, I will confirm that notices were mailed to each property owner. Okay. Mayor, my recommendation for the proceeding through tonight's hearing is, after Gwen Owens has provided her comments, to open the public hearing, provide an opportunity for any property owners that are present to address the city council, then provide an opportunity for any other members of the public that wish to address the city council, to provide their comments. At that point, to close the public hearing, and then to, to enter into deliberations. There are four particular findings that are required to be made, and are actually part of the resolutions of necessity. Those particular findings are that the public interest and necessity require the proposed project, the project is planned or located in a manner that would be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury, that the real property interests sought to be acquired are necessary for the proposed project, and that the offers of just compensation have been made. Some information relating to those particular findings is provided in your staff report, and Gwen Owens is, is going to provide some supplemental information relating to those four items as well. Each of the three resolutions requires a four-fifth vote in order to be adopted, and so at this point, we'll turn the mic over to Gwen to add additional information as she wishes.
Very briefly, up on the screen is the Twin Cities Roundabout. As you can see, the improvements are west of West Stockton to east of East Stockton on Twin Cities roads. The improvements basically consist of removing the two traffic signals, one at East Stockton and Twin Cities, and the other one is at West Stockton and Twin Cities, and installing two roundabouts. In conjunction with that, there's ADA improvements, pedestrian improvements, and bicycle improvements, and then additionally, there's a new southbound on-ramp. The properties that are in question are right over here, right over here, and right over here. And as you can see, those properties are needed to be able to make the roundabout improvements, and the purpose of this project is basically, there are existing deficiencies on Twin Cities, to remove those existing deficiencies, and to provide growth, for near-term planned growth for the next approximately ten years or so. And that includes my information.
At this time, it's open, the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
I declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone regarding the properties that wish to speak at this time? Are you one of the property owners?
Yes.
Will you come forward?
Mayor, just as a point of order, the first item is, we want to hear from any property owners that are the subject of the resolutions of necessity to condemn, and then if there's any additional testimony, we can take that testimony after we hear from any property owners.
I'll just speak in a minute.
Don't go too far.
Sorry.
Okay.
Just hang on just a sec.
Okay. So if there are no property owners involved in the resolution to speak, then we will now go to others that would like to speak. I think that means, that means you.
Yeah. Step down too quick, Mike.
Yes, that's why he just wanted you to step back from the podium, is what he wanted you to do.
Thanks.
Mike, got you, General Park Company, we own the piece of property on the northwest corner, and all I was trying to find out is, I can't remember, are we getting any landscaping along our corridor there, and what's happening to landscaping on the roundabout? Because there was some discussion about what was gonna be put out there, remember we was gonna put some metal things, and then we weren't gonna put metal?
Metal sculptures.
Metal, pardon, sculptures.
Not metal things.
So, back to landscaping, are, is there any landscaping going in that area that's gonna be watered along where our property is?
You know, I think this came up, I don't recall the answer. Staff, do you remember?
Basically, for the western roundabout, there's an issue with waters approximately eight hundred feet away, and so it'd be a significant cost to bring water there, so that roundabout is planned to be hardscaped. The roundabout for East Stockton will have landscaping, plus also the sculptures in the roundabout also.
Was that the area you were asking about, or was it adjacent to the roundabout?
Yeah, I was just considering the, you know, the water situation and having it on what you have on the west side, because naturally, I mean, on the east side, because on the west side is naturally where most of the traffic comes into your town.
So did we answer your question?
No.
Oh.
If you'd like, there would be an opportunity for us to get together, and we can actually show you what the sculptures look like. There was a lot of thought and design features that went into that to make it an entry point into the city.
Okay, well, we'll, I'll go along with that.
All right, thank you. Are there any others that would like to ask a question or comment at this time? Okay, so we're ready to close the public hearing, and I'm lost now.
And there's, so we closed the public hearing, there's three resolutions that are presented for your consideration. I request that you act on each resolution separately, and I believe the clerks can read the titles of those resolutions into the record, and then you could entertain a motion and any discussion.
Do we need to ask the city clerk if she received any written objections? I know we asked if she had notified everybody, but did you receive any written?
I did, did not receive any written objections or any letters from the property owners.
Okay. So we're ready to have any discussion, I believe, from the council? Do you have questions, clarifications on anything? And just to be clear to the audience, we have quite a bit of information in our packet that has been provided for us to study before we come here, so if we don't come up with a lot of questions, it's not because we're not interested or don't know what's going on, it's that we've had opportunity to study this, and perhaps even ask questions, because there have been comments about, why are you guys just vote without asking any questions? I wanted to make that clear. We do our homework here.
Thanks for making that clear.
You're welcome. Okay, so I think we're ready to read the resolutions?
Okay, the first resolution tonight, a resolution of the city council of the City of Galt, California, declaring that the acquisition of a portion of certain real property by eminent domain located in the City of Galt, and more particularly described as Assessor Parcel Number one-four-eight dash zero-zero-seven-four dash zero-two-seven, is necessary for the State Route ninety-nine, Twin Cities Road Interchange Improvement Project.
I would ask, is there a motion regarding that resolution? We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. That motion passed unanimously. Next resolution, please.
Next resolution, a resolution of the city council of the City of Galt, declaring that the acquisition of a portion of certain real property by eminent domain located in the county of Sacramento, and more particularly described as Assessor Parcel Number one-four-eight dash zero-two-four-zero dash zero-zero-one, is necessary for the State Route ninety-nine, Twin Cities Road Interchange Improvement Project.
You've heard the resolution, is there a motion to that effect, please?
I'll do the accept.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Okay, one more resolution?
One more resolution, a resolution of the city council of the City of Galt, declaring that the acquisition of a portion of certain real property by eminent domain located in the county of Sacramento, and more particularly described as Assessor Parcel Numbers one-four-eight dash zero-two-five-zero dash zero-five-four, and one-four-eight dash zero-two-five-zero dash, dash, zero-five-six, is necessary for the State Route ninety-nine, Twin Cities Road Interchange Improvement Project.
To accept.
Second.
We have a motion to accept the resolution, and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion for the resolution passed unanimously. City Attorney, any comments?
No, thank you very much.
So you have the votes to proceed?
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next item.
Next item, Public Works Department, contribution agreement with California Department of Transportation for the Twin Cities Road Highway ninety-nine interchange interim improvement, CIP number fifty-eight P.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, do I have to leave that up here?
Oh, you have it, okay.
Sorry. Same project. We have an opportunity to advance our partnership with Caltrans on this project, to essentially piggyback on work that they have. Um, we have an opportunity to, uh, advance our partnership with Caltrans on this project to essentially piggyback on work that they have already under contract. You recall last year, Caltrans was doing a lot of maintenance work on Highway 99 from South County up in Elk Grove and so forth, and, um, they actually left out a chunk along this segment and they intend to finish that work this July. So, starting in July. The project we have, uh, nearing completion and design, of which of course we're now requiring the rideaway for, uh, doesn't really show it on this exhibit, but there's a fair amount of work along the median in this area to accommodate this, this new ramp and, uh, clearance issues at the old, at the old bridge. Caltrans is willing to actually do that work as part of their contract if we pay for it. And, uh, that's what this agreement is about. They're asking for us to advance the funds, uh, that would get spent this summer, which would mean we could then take that work out of our project. There is a cost savings to doing it this way, um, and we don't know exactly how much. We estimate it's in the range of $335,000, as much as a half million dollars, uh, if we take advantage of this opportunity. Caltrans did not give us a whole lot of time to figure this out and I want to thank, uh, the folks at Omni Means, especially Ron Boyle who's here in the audience. By the way, if you have questions about this, that, uh, he worked really hard to pull this off. Um, Caltrans gave us, uh, a, a standard agreement to allow us to do this, that we didn't have much really opportunity to make tweaks to it, um, but fundamentally, it's a very short arrangement that, you know, allows us to advance the funds. They've asked for the construction amount, um, and their administrative costs, which is, uh, $675,000 upfront and that we set aside a contingency amount of $170,000 that we would hold on to in the event that, uh, it is needed. You know, if it's not, of course, we keep it. And even if the initial amount comes in less at the end, we would get that refunded. That, that could take some time. So, we think it's a, a appropriate thing to do, uh, the cost savings is real, um, both in terms of, of actual construction costs, but there's a, a big issue with, uh, the, the effect of, of not having to have our contractor work out in the main line. Um, it, it really, we believe we'd really lower our bid prices, um, but we obviously can't. We don't, can't predict that exactly, but we, we know there's, uh, an advantage there and of course, there's less risk than not having to work out there as well. So, if you have questions, well, between Gwen and Ron who's here somewhere.
Right.
Um, if they, if they can't answer them, nobody can.
Okay. Are there questions regarding this opportunity?
Seems that it's all explanatory.
Does, Councilman?
Quick question, just, I already know the answer, but just so the public has it. The funds aren't coming from general fund at all, correct?
Yeah, no.
These are coming from the transportation-
Transportation, uh, impact fees, hopefully.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would you read the recommended action, please?
Recommended action, adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to number one, execute a contribution agreement with Caltrans in the amount of $845,000 for Caltrans to construct mainline improvements to Highway 99 that are, that are required as part of the Twin Cities Roundabout Project Improvements. And number two, approve a budget transfer for fiscal year 2012, 13 to 2011, 12 in the amount of $845,000.
Can we take this in one action, one motion? You've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to that effect?
Motion to approve is read.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. Next item.
Next item, a word of bid for 2012 Slurry Seal Rubberized Cape Seal and Parking Lot Restoration Project.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, they seem like we're spending a lot of money tonight, but, um, it's all, uh, pavement, maintenance money that we've actually been building up a fair amount. In fact, one of the items that I, I heard about from other agencies at the time was, you know, you're sitting on way too much money, uh, each to get spent. And, uh, this is a big step in doing that, uh, in terms of pavement maintenance. This project was, uh, bid earlier in the spring, we had a problem with the bids and, uh, they were rejected and we rebid it, made some changes to the project and we're bringing it back to you now for award. The actual amount of the bid, uh, of 800 and, or pardon me, 600, sorry, um, for this work was, uh, $610,000 for, from the low bidder. So it was substantially below our estimate, uh, by the, to the tune of around $200,000. And we, um, wished to take advantage of, of that low price and, uh, utilize additional funds that are, uh, in the budget that we were holding back on for a number of reasons. First of all, when we first put this budget together back in the early spring, um, we obviously didn't know we would get really good prices. Uh, secondly, we were still just getting started in our budget process and with all the other projects that were going on, there was some concern about committing all of our money, um, to this project in the event we needed it elsewhere and we, and having gone through the budget now, we're, we're not as worried about that now. Um, so, we're looking to kind of catch up on some of the backlog we have, so we're recommending that we have the authorization tonight to award additional, uh, slurries and cape seals, um, or work that we probably would have put off until next year and take advantage of this, of this low price. The low bid for the slurry seal, for example, was 12 cents per square foot. We anticipated prices upwards of 15 cents. Now that doesn't seem like much, 3 cents, but when you're talking about over 2 million square feet, that starts to add up. So, we really think we should take advantage of this and, and we've spoken to the contractor, they're willing to do more work. Um, we think we were fortunate in getting a good bid price this late in the season, um, but we can still get the work done this summer. So, we would ask for your authorization, as indicated in the staff report, to award additional work on a change order basis up to our budget. The other item that's included in the recommendation tonight has to do with one of the parking lots. Um, we did bid a couple, well, three of our parking lots, um, just to test the waters and what kind of prices we could get on, on, on doing slurry seals and other repair work on those. Um, we asked for prices on the Galt Market Lot surrounding the, the market and for a few portions of the lots here at City Hall. Um, the price advantage on those didn't come in that, that great and, and because the parking lots are not eligible for, uh, the typical state street maintenance money, they're a general fund item, um, we were a little more, a little more cautious on that. Um, we, we are recommending that we look at awarding the, the Market Lot. You know, the Market is a significant asset to the city, it's something that does need to be maintained. Um, it's, it is in great need of having some parking lot maintenance, pavement maintenance. The portion inside the Market is in pretty good shape, there's a few areas that need some minor repair work that we, we believe we can do with our own crews, um, but the area on the, in the parking lot is, is beyond our capability. So, the, the bid that we have for $140,000 is something we are recommending that you award. Of course, the bad news on that is that we only have $10,000 in the CIP for, for, um, parking lot work right now. So, we, we would need an appropriation of additional funds out of the, uh, capital reserve for this. Um, so, that's kind of the nutshell of what we have recommended for you tonight. If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions? Questions? The area that you're talking about, is that throughout the town that you'll be doing the-
The slurry area?
Yeah, the slurry seal.
Right, um, they're actually scattered throughout town. We, we, um, you know, and I, I actually didn't bring a list of the ones that we're-
No, you don't have-
-planned on doing, but I know the ones that we were going to add were, uh, Carillion, uh, Walnut, Lincoln, and one of these subdivisions, Chancellor, uh, to Carillion, which is what we would, had planned on doing in a future year, we wanted to bring into this year. We're still refining the exact limits of which exactly streets in the subdivision, but that's the general area we're looking at. Um, the ones that are being done under the base bid that we had planned and bid earlier are, are really scattered throughout town, they're mostly residential streets.
Do you remember F, F?
F is on the list, yes.
Okay. Cause I've had some-
Right.
-um, concerns from some of the citizens especially about that one, so that's on the list.
Right. That's getting a pretty heavy, that's getting one of the cape seals and a lot of, a lot of base repairs.
Okay. Okay, um, would you read the recommended action, please?
Adopt the resolution approving the filing of a California Environmental Quality Act, Notice of Exemption pursuant to Section 15301(c) of the SECA guidelines and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with California Pavement Maintenance Company Incorporated in the amount of $760,805 for the construction of the 2012 Slurry Seal Rubberized Cape Seal Contracts and Parking Lot Restoration Project and authorize an overall contract amount including additional work, contingency and miscellaneous project costs up to the approved budgeted amount of $1,270,200. And number two, authorize the city manager to execute a change order to add additional streets for pavement maintenance work up to the approved project budget. And number three, appropriate $155,400 from the general fund capital projects contingency reserve to market parking lot improvements. And number four, authorize the director of public works to accept the improvements and issue the notice of completion upon completion of the work.
Can this be done in one action? Okay, you've heard the recommended action, is there a motion to that?
Motion to accept.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously and thank you for those good deals we're getting. Next, haha, next item.
Communication? Hi. Is that on the agenda? No, no. Okay. Go ahead. Next is, uh, city clerk's report, just a couple reminders. Um, the, some of the reminders on your calendar, the Parks and Rec and the Planning Commission have the wrong dates, I'll read the correct dates. Uh, June 13th is our Parks and Recreation Commission meeting at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. June 14th is the Planning Commission meeting at 6:30 in the council chambers. And that takes us to our next meeting of June 19th. And I don't believe there are any additional reminders.
Comments by staff?
Just a, uh, I guess a reminder that tonight was the kickoff for the Tuesday night produce market over at Smud Park, so, the council members may not be able to make it prior to the council meeting, but it'll be there again next Tuesday night, every Tuesday, 5 to 8 o'clock through, what's the end of, end of September 5th? So go on out, we had, how many vendors did we have? How many produce vendors do we have out there tonight? We had 10 produce vendors.
Oh, wow.
So a lot of produce vendors. So, go out, spread the word, tell your friends, come on out and enjoy.
It seems like there will be no excuse for not eating healthy with all those good vegetables out there.
I have all the cherries, I have all kinds of excuses. I mean, I'll go get the veggies, but, uh, I gotta have my chocolate, too.
That's healthy.
That's a good food group. Any other comments from staff? If not, I would, uh, go to the council and I will start with Vice Mayor Powers. Well, I do want to start letting everyone know that June 30th is our, um, Independence Day celebration this year. It's on a Saturday and we've been working very hard with staff, Armando and staff for the last year. Um, we've added something new this year, we are going to have, um, a, um, what we're going to call like a kind of old-time county fair, uh, in the ex, in the Chabola Center and, uh, you can bring your quilts, um, pickled things, what else do we have? Bakery goods?
Jams.
Jams, that's right. And, uh, also, we have a contest that we're doing in conjunction with, um, the Ball Carol that I think is going to be a lot of fun. It's for kids 18 and under to take a picture of their favorite park in Galt and it's going to be a photography contest, so if kids would go out there and take a picture of the thing that they're really impressed with or they love a lot about our town, um, I think that's going to be a real fun thing for the kids. There's a lot more things going on, if you go onto our website, it's, uh, everything's been put up there. Uh, there's softball tournament, there's a volleyball tournament, there's a horseshoe tournament and, sure, Councilmember Singleton, Armando, let me know if I've forgotten anything. Oh, there's pool, uh, uh, what's it called in the pool?
Fireworks in the pool.
Fireworks in the pool, so, uh, family of four can go and hang out at the pool.
Lots of fireworks from the pool for $10.
Right.
And the story, uh, book telling at the library with pets.
We have a lot of things planned, we've added some things and we hope every year, uh, to add more things. And this is a free event put on by the city of Galt for the citizens of Galt, we're really excited about it and, you know, surrounding people, so, come on down, we'll have a band, a veterans field, uh, from 5 to 9 and all kinds of fun things going on. I want to say fireworks in the pool, I think our fire department's going to like that.
That's great, you're going to watch them in the pool.
Oh, oh, right.
Not be firing them off.
Oh, okay. Cause we're afraid that if we said at the pool, everyone would be at the pool if they get the fire on.
Right.
All right. Councilmember Singleton?
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Shelton?
I hope everyone voted, today was voting. They talked about, uh, the lowest turnout nationwide, I think not even 30 percent. I also, along with, uh, Mayor Payne, which was a speaker, uh, attended the memorial services, which is always, uh, very emotional for those that attend, uh, bless those souls that gave their all. Uh, I want to thank, uh, councilmen, uh, Mayor Lou and Barbara for helping with, uh, the recognition and the lunching for our volunteer committee members. Thank you very much. You guys, uh, blew me away. Thank you.
Wow, that's hardly due. Yeah, really.
It is.
Wow, we ought to say it more often. Councilman Cruz?
Uh, I have nothing other than, uh, just to repeat, a big thank you to Armando, to ma- uh, to Vice Mayor Powers and to Councilmember Singleton for putting together our, uh, upcoming celebration.
Thank you.
And I would just like to say congratulations to all the students that, uh, graduated from Galt High School, from Liberty Ranch, Estrelita, now they're on their way to newer and bigger things, but we hope they'll come back to Galt and continue to work with us to make Galt a better place in which to live. So if there's no further business, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:14. We are- Thank you. And, uh, where do people sign up to this thing? On the website. Okay. But on the website, so we have to take everything apart and wrap it on the website. Thank you for that. Hey, how are you?
Hello. Hello. Please, uh, just wanted to tie you on-
Share your equipment, that's great. Well, that's, you can have a nice in it.
Got it. Well, you know, one people- Two of them. Probably. Somebody has to do it. And I was planning to- Good job, man. Good job. You have to look after yourself.
We've got a couple of these.
Yeah. Yeah.[1766.13]